Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm delighted to be here, Kenton. As you know, we have 64 campuses and all over the state. And I haven't yet been, this is my first time in Kenton. Takes a little while to get here. We just came from Proxville. And President Hester Bird pointed out that she invited me to come to Proxville two years ago. And she did, and I started then, and I got there today. It's not a long distance, but it's really great to be here. I know of all the very good things you're doing here, and I'm just so pleased that I have this opportunity to be with you, to talk about something that's really very important. You have to talk, but usually, you know, the best way to get a message across is to show a movie, show people something visually. So let's run this video. The rule of the game was everybody has a fair shot at success. That is America.
Parents who never had the chance to go to college themselves, like my mother, dream of seeing their children get that degree.
Society promised mobility. You could do better, and your children could do better. And the great equalizer was the public education system. That with a public education, you could vote from anywhere and wind up anything. You could be Mario Cuomo, my father, born to poor Italian immigrants in South Jamaica, Queens, and you could wind up Governor of New York, all from the public education system. It is basically insane to tell the young people of this country, "We want you to go out and get the best educations you can, get the jobs of the future." Oh, but by the way, they're going to be $30, $50, $100,000 in debt.
College is supposed to help people achieve their dreams, but more and more, paying for college actually pushes those dreams further and further out of reach.
New York State is going to do something about it. We're going to start this year the Excelsior Scholarship, together with Cuomo's whole new vision when it comes to higher education in the Empire State.
The governor wants to make college tuition free for households making less than $125,000 a year.
I wouldn't have to worry about being in debt, and it'd put me and my family at peace.
There are so many people that are limited because of the money that they have to pay.
The further I get through my college career, and I have $0 of debt, the more I've gotten appreciative, and the more free I feel.
The American dream lands in the state of New York, and no one is taking it away. And that's what this program is all about. So that's the story. You want to hear any more? Now, since he took office, Governor Cuomo has prioritized workforce readiness and planning for the jobs of tomorrow, something that SUNY has a very large stake in. He understands that for businesses to thrive in New York State, we need to provide them with top-notch workforce with the right skill set. By building our state schools into national leaders in research and innovation, we can continue to attract high-paying jobs to the Empire State. By building our state schools, we can turn things around for the economy of the state. That means that today's students will be able to build successful lives right here in New York State. SUNY is working tirelessly, not only to provide world-class education to students, but also to be engines of economic development in communities throughout New York. As college students, some of you who are here, as college students know, that this is a time when you have the most power to determine who you are and what you will become. So much of what happens now and next is up to the students. So I want to start by talking about a few numbers. Now, I know you're getting ready for finals, and I apologize to math majors to throw numbers at you at this point. First number is 3.5 million. That's how many jobs will require at least an associate's degree in New York State by 2024. 70%, that's how many of the 7.9 million jobs currently existing in New York State, which requires some level of college training. And $30,000, that's the average college loan debt in New York State. And we all know that many graduates are burdened by much more than that. So we're caught between two hard facts. One, college is the new high school. It's the baseline requirement for getting ahead in any economy that's switched from heavy industry to high-tech. Two, it's too expensive for New York's middle-class families. Governor Cuomo knows this, and that's why he pushed so hard for tuition-free education at our SUNY and our CUNY schools, the first plan of its kind in America. The new Excelsior Scholarship Program goes into effect this coming fall. Initially, this will be for families with an income under $100,000. It would help bridge the gap with a portion of tuition not paid for by the TAP and Pell Grants, and can provide students up to $5,500. The cost of tuition-free college is nothing compared to the price we will pay if thousands of young people can't get the education that they need and that they deserve. We cannot have the generation entering the workforce without the skills today's employers desire. We also can't allow you to leave college with so much debt that buying a car, purchasing a house, or starting a family is impossible. The American dream delayed is a dream denied. The numbers don't lie. Those who have college degrees earn on average twice as much over their lifetime as people who don't have a college degree. Corporate hiring, hiring of college graduates across all degree levels is expected to increase by 23% over the next three years. I've been saying this wherever I go in New York State. Our problem isn't a lack of jobs. It's making sure that all of you have the skills you need to fill those jobs. I know you've probably heard some of the criticisms about this program, but this is really a win for New Yorkers. First, this doesn't take away from our two-year schools. They're included in the program, and we're actually encouraging students to get their associate's degree. New York also remains one of the most generous states when it comes to helping to pay private college education. We provide over $400 million in support to independent colleges, and more than $300 million of this is in TAP dollars for 90,000 private school students. And private schools typically have an average tuition of $34,000 versus roughly $5,500 for SUNY and JUNY. This is about making sure that those students in the middle, the ones who might not qualify for TAP, but aren't wealthy enough to avoid heavy debt, are also taken care of by this program. And it's also about getting people to graduate on time. If you qualify, you will go to school tuition-free, two years for an associate's degree and four years for a bachelor's degree. We want you here full-time getting those degrees. The goal here is very simple. It's to have the best educated, best-prepared workforce in the United States. Of all the assets we can afford to starve, our human capital, our business innovators, government leaders, educators, scientists, this is the most precious of all. I want to thank you for being here and for listening and for the questions you're going to ask, because we want to give you all the information you need so that you and people you know can take advantage of the Excelsior Scholarship Program. It's one of the most important things that's happened in higher education. And that's why New York is first in this country moving forward to make it possible. Now, we're going to answer your questions, and my job is to answer all of the easy questions. The harder questions are going to be answered by a young man who's here, the Vice President of the Higher Education Services Corporation. Now, this is the corporation that at the present time handles all the TAP programs and a variety of other scholarship programs, and they're going to be the administrators of the Excelsior Scholarship Program. They're now doing two things. They're working on application, and that application will be available by June 7. The other thing they're doing, and that's why this kind of session is so important, you know, the legislation sets forth the broad outlines of the program. But this organization, just like other agencies, they write the regulations for the administration of the program, and they're in the process of writing regulations. So hearing from you today will be helpful as they see what they can do to tweak the legislation and provide the kind of regulations that will make the program as efficient and effective as possible. And his name is Ronnie Fweet, and he is here, as I said. The tough ones, I think. So we open up to any questions you have about the Excelsior Program.
Carl, thank you for coming. I've got a simple question. I hope it's simple. Our transition vets get the GI Bill. Now, you talked about the TAP, the FASA will be deducted first before this helps. Will the GI Bill affect what they get as far as their tuition and as far as their residency?
For residency, no. Residency is much more, you know, if you're based in New York, you know, you will be considered residency.
Well, no, especially resident rate. So even if they're from another state, like North Carolina coming here.
Yeah, your eligibility, you know, as a GI, you know, that translates, that also translates into residency. But there's a lot of benefits that are already coming from the federal government, so that group of people probably already has their tuition covered. And in addition to, you know, the TAP bill, the TAP program and all those, you know, you have a lot of resources already available so that you don't have a gap in tuition. So, you know, you would be eligible, but likely you wouldn't need it.
The Excelsior Program is the last dollar. All of your other benefits, the GI benefits, are considered first. And if that doesn't cover your full tuition, that delta is made up by Excelsior. So it just depends on how rich that pool is before you fit to Excelsior.
Thank you very much. But we do have other, you know, we have Veterans Awards that has, we have other awards that, you know, you should look into, and maybe you're there too.
We're with the Department of Labor, that's why.
No, that's true. Well, you should look into the Public Service Student Loan Program that the federal government offers, because at the public service, you'd be able to get your loans forgiven after ten years to. So, we'll talk about that later.
Question? Yes, ma'am.
We have a lot of programs here, like our criminal investigation, for example, and a lot of jobs in this area that are federal jobs, like Border Patrol, immigration. A lot of times with those types of jobs, this person does not have options as far as where they're going to be sent to work. So if we have someone who takes advantage of this program, and they get hired with Border Patrol, they may say at some point, "You're going to Texas instead of New York State." Is something being built into it to take that into consideration as with the graduate programs and the military?
This deals with this issue that after you finish, if you finish in two years or four years, that you then have to spend equivalent amount of time working in New York. There will be some exceptions. However, the fact is that if you work for some agency that requires you to live somewhere else, you live somewhere else. And we want people to stay in New York. It's true that you might have, but there will be exceptions, right?
There are exceptions. We have exceptions, something like that where you are based here, and your job transfers you somewhere else of no fault of your own. That would be something hardship that we would take into account. Everyone has a lot of different situations. If your job moves you somewhere, and you can't control that, which I think what you're talking about falls into, we would work with you, and we would, you know, be able to help you out. That's what we do work very much.
You're individual-based.
Yeah, it's individual-based, so it's very hard to, you know, do a point.
Right in the back.
It's been touted that this is going to be free tuition for everyone, or is it free tuition for those who apply early and get some of the money before it's gone? You don't know exactly how many people are going to apply for this. Are you going to start with the seniors, the juniors, sophomores, freshmen? The pool can't be unlimited, so are there people, you're touting this is for everyone, but maybe the freshmen won't get money this year because they've run out of the money?
Well, we hope we don't run out of money, but it's eligible for everyone on the same basis. Now, if at some point we have, and who knows how many people will apply, if we get to the point that more people apply, then we have money, and the program will not cover those additional people. However, this program was passed by the legislature. These are people you've elected, these are people who represent you. And I think the legislature feels, as you think, that this is good. So if we run out of money, can't we go back to the legislature and say, "Look, this is working. Look how many people have applied, but we got these other people who haven't come. Why don't you give us some more money?" And that's going to be your job, really, to reach out to legislators and say, "You know, this is working, we need some more help."
Because of our modeling, we don't think that we will run out of money. We've never run out, everyone who's gotten a TAP award has never run out of a TAP award. You know, we think that there's enough money in the program that everyone will be able to apply. In our regulations that we're doing, we are not currently building in some system for, we're not doing a lottery or anything like that. The law says preference does go to existing students and then incoming students, but we fully think that all students will be able to fit into this program. So it's not a first-come, first-served. Apply, if you're eligible, we will get you an award, the governor's promise is much.
We offer a collection of one-year trade-oriented certificates, like electrician, practical nursing, air conditioning maintenance, that sort of thing. It's my understanding that this program does not cover certificates, but that seems unfortunate. I was wondering if there was any potential for that to change in the future, because a lot of our adult learners, people who may not go to college but could see this as an opportunity, might be, might see the appeal of a one-year trade certificate that could get them a pretty lucrative job. So I'm just asking, is there a potential in the future that those types of degrees would be eligible for funding?
Everything is possible. Who thought six months ago we would have this? But that's an important point for you to make and for the public to make, and we could certainly look at that in the future. That would be up to the government and the legislature, but at the present time, that's not part of the program. Yes, sir.
SUNY Kenton has an extensive history of providing funds to the clubs on campus. With this program, will there be any dip in the resources that are available from the college towards the students and the college?
No, this is, this is, this is two separate things. The college has its own budget, and they will use that budget to fund clubs and other activities. This is a program that goes directly to the student, and it will enable the student not to pay tuition. So those are two different things, and there shouldn't be any conflict. Way back.
Thank you for being here. I was just wondering, if more from us, but I know with TAP, we have certain things, such as the STEM Scholarship, and one of the rules for the Excelsior would be that students have to have completed 30 earned credits. So is it, has it been discussed when we certify? Would it be after an entire academic year to make sure that the students have earned 30 credits? Or is that just something that is going to be, they'll be pended until they've earned 30?
You send your, you certify it not after the entire academic year, after the semester. So it would be, you know, the first year is your 15 credits, and we'll give you an award for that, you know, and you certify it. And the next is another 15-credit semester there, too. If you attend for the first year, and you don't get your 15 credits, say you get 12 credits, we still give you an award, you do not have to pay that back. Your second semester, if you can't make that up by taking seven, 18 credits, and math is off there, by doing 18 credits, or if you don't do a winter term or a summer term, you know, and you fall short then, then that will, you will not get an award released free for that, and then the college will end up billing you whatever your expected Excelsior amount would be. But, you know, everyone will get their first semester. We're going to believe in you and give you the chance and think that you are definitely going to make it. If you're off track, we still believe that you'll get back on track. So that first semester is guaranteed. The second semester, if you don't make it, then you would be removed from the program.
Thank you.
Yes.
In a way, piggybacking off of that question, for those incoming seniors such as myself, who doesn't need the 30 full credits for next year, I only need 24 to graduate, am I going to have to take two extra classes on top of the credits that I've already required to take and classes I don't need to necessarily take and able to be eligible for the Excelsior itself?
If you have a program that clearly is a pathway to graduation, which is what this is all about, if you've already done it, and you've been graduating, it's clear that you have enough credits to graduate, then that's right. The idea of the 30 credits is to make sure you graduate. You want to see that you are on a path to graduation, that's the key. Yes, sir.
If a student fails to remain eligible, and the Excelsior does revert to a loan, is the interest rate on that loan a set percentage, or how will that be determined?
This is a very unique program, and I wish this, banks would do this with mortgages, et cetera. No interest loan. When you get the loan, you don't pay back the loan without interest.
It does not convert into, if you are in, if you're a sophomore, and you leave the program, that amount for that second semester, that is not a loan, that is just normal tuition. It converts to a loan after you've graduated, and you don't fulfill the live-work requirement. If you move out of state, if you work out of state, that's when it converts into a loan. And just like the chairman said, it is a 0% loan, so you still may go off very well, better than you would in the normal market of...
Yes.
So the maximum eligibility is four years? If it, if you, like, some of the colleges in the area have like an externship where they might be an extra semester before they finish? Am I correct about that? It's just four years, not...
If you're in a five-year program, it's a five-year award. If you're in a two-year program, it's a two-year award. However long your program is expected to graduate, that's how long the Excelsior Scholarship lasts.
Yes.
I'm currently a junior, and I transferred in from another college, and I have three years there, but I'm on track for the two years I was set to graduate here with. So would you be able to pardon me about the four-year bachelor program?
You're in a four-year bachelor program, and we're looking for you to graduate in those four years. So that's what we're expecting to do. Transfer students, that's all what we're working out and reckoned. Everybody's transfer situation is very different. How that counts in, because there's people that have gotten an associate's degree, and then they're transferring in, does that count as two years, even though maybe not all your credit's transferred, and then you really got three years? I mean, that stuff that we've got to work out is not just, you know, we'd love to do everything, but then what's the fiscal, how many students do we expect to do there? So that's something that we still do have to work out, that's in the weeds and figuring out. But you are eligible, you know, we're trying to get you to four years because we want you to have lower debt, we want you to join the workforce, and we want you to start, you know, being a part of New York State.
The gentleman in the back.
If, let's say you have a student who's not quite ready for college, and they don't make it in the first year, can they start again 20 or 3 years later, or are they forever cut out of this program?
You are cut out of the Excelsior Program. We have other, you know, I mean, you're not cut out of the TAP program. You know, we have other awards that we can work for you. But really, we are trying to get, you know, the mindset of people entering college to do it in four years. We're trying to get the mindset of the schools who recognize that students need to do this in four years, so they're not putting people in endless remedial courses, so that they give you the academic advisement so that you can finish in four years. This is an incentive program for everyone. The state's got to support you to make sure you can make it in four years. The school's got to support you to make sure you make it in four years. Your family's got to support you to make sure in four years, because we have a student debt problem in the trillions, and it's holding back economic growth, it's holding back people moving on with their lives. So we really are stuck on trying to get people in and out of school as quick as we possibly can.
Would there be any consideration that, let's say, if somebody paid back that first year, would then they be eligible to try it again?
Like the chairman said, anything is possible. That's not considered in the program right now. Really, it's not about the money for us, we're giving you 0% loans. We really just want you to have a mindset of four years, two years, five years, in and out.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm a accounting professor here. I read the frequent asked question, and noticed that there is a kind of the like earned total 30 credit, that's earned credit requirement, but there's no requirement for GPA. For example, in my accounting, basic accounting, student can get a D, which is only counted GPA as a one. And, but for some program, like an accounting major and a finance major, they're required to minimum to get C, which is counted 2.5, you know, this is a GPA. So for this situation, for example, I have a student who passed with a D, but he still needs to require to retake this class next semester to go at least a C. So for this situation, will he still receive this free tuition?
Our program does not have a GPA requirement.
Right.
We don't recommend these, but we don't have a GPA requirement. You have a GPA requirement.
Right.
And if you are not allowing them to, if you're not giving them the credit, if you're not progressing them and not giving them credit, then we're not giving them credit. But that is your requirement, and it's not the Excelsior Program requirement. TAP has a GPA requirement. Other, whatever other awards you might, if you're getting private scholarships, they may have GPA requirements. Excelsior is, as long as you're passing, and you're passing your courses on time, we're fine. But if, like you said, that student has to take the course again, we would not consider that on time. So then they would...
What if he takes these classes again, but he kind of, he's not ready for the first semester? So first semester passed in the end as a twive credit, so, and a four credit. He registered 16 credit, but passed a twive, okay? Next semester, he go ahead and register, he registered 18 credit and passed all. So even though he registered one classes for two semester, but he can totally have 30 credit for the one academic year, will he still be in this program?
You need to achieve 30 credits within a calendar year.
Okay.
So you can do 12 credits. You have to have 12 credits in your fall and semester year. So you can do 12 credits in the fall. You could do 12 credits in the spring, and then make up those credits in the summer.
Right.
We don't cover you in the summer. You could use your TAP award in the summer, you know, Excelsior covers you in your fall and your, in your fall and your spring. You could make them up in the winter, if you messed up a class in the fall, and you want to make it up in the winter, or make it up in the summer. And at the end of the year, we want to know, are you at 30 credits? If you are at 30 credits, then you are in the program.
However you get there.
Okay, I see.
However you get there, there's some creative ways of doing it, and you've come up with a lot of them.
Yeah. My understanding is my students still have opportunities as long as they achieve 30 credits.
Our rule is 30 credits in 365 days, you know, however that calendar lands, then you're in. If you came in as a spring start, you have until next spring to get those 30, to get those 30 credits.
Okay.
You know, and that could include a summer or winter, you could study abroad, whatever. However you do it, just get the 30 credits, we'll give you an award.
Okay, got you. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Will the taxes go up to pay for this?
That's not a decision we make. That's a decision other people make, and you have to talk to them.
No, they won't go up. The governor has had the lowest tax rate in, you know, 30 years. We have actually reduced taxes for the middle class this year. We have been very good on taxes. We have held spending for the state government below 2%. So whereas you see, you know, programs like this are coming into play, state agencies like us, where I work, we don't print. We keep our, we keep our spending flat, we keep our spending low. The government has built up a lot of industry in the state, and we're getting in additional tax base, additional tax revenue. In a program like this, if I can get you out in three years, that fourth year, you're paying, income tax, you're paying, you're buying a house, you're paying property tax, you bought a car, where, you know, so you were more valuable to New York State outside this program as a paying citizen, so we might as well give you a little award so you can hurry up, and...
So you're the alternative to taxes, yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is the Empire College Program covered on your list?
Empire State College, the online?
Yes.
Yes.
Another question. So for students that come in and they are on the Excelsior Scholarship and decide that they want to change majors through, you know, after two, three, four semesters already into a major, are they still going to be eligible for the transition of going from one four-year program into another four-year program and be able to still receive it in that change of major?
Are you still graduating in four years? That's what we care about. I changed my major three times. I changed my major three times. But, you know, all my courses were still, I was able to still use my courses, they all counted, you know? If you change majors and now you need an extra course to graduate, you can figure out how to make that up somewhere, like in the summer term or winter term and do something like that. You know, the average student changes their majors three times before they graduate. We understand that. But what we're trying to do, graduate in four years, and that's, that's what the goal is.
Well, we really just want to thank you because this is important, the questions you've asked, the issues you've raised, we need to consider all those as the regulations are put together. But the bottom line is, this is really a win for New York. It really shows that New York is serious about educating people and New York is serious about growing its economy, and these two things go together. And the students who are now here and students who will come in the future will make a difference. And the idea that you want you to work in New York when you finish, we want you to get back, we want you to stay here. But our job is to make sure that there are opportunities available in New York. We think those opportunities are already there. What they're looking for are people who are qualified, who are skilled, and the education you're getting here at Kent and the education you're getting from SUNY, this is what's going to make a difference. So thank you very much.
I want to take a moment to just once again thank Chairman McCall, Lonny Freet, and Darren Jones for leading us in this informative presentation and question and answer. It's so important for all of us. I also want to express our anticipation of working with Chairman McCall and our new Chancellor, Dr. Johnson, as we move forward. And Lenora Vander Zee, who leads Government Relations, has some gifts for the campus to share with our guests. And once again, thank you for being here, thank you for coming, thank you for your thoughtful questions. Good luck on finals.